Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for May 1st, 2014. My name is Rob Garrity, I'm the Chairman of the Board. To my right is Scott Bugby, our Vice Chair, to my left is Jim Leehan, our Clerk. We're joined by Jack Hathaway Town Administrator, Marion Harrington, our Executive Assistant Capable and Able, as always. I would advise those in the audience and those watching on TV that we are audio and videotape this evening. Mr. Hathaway, would you read the agenda?
I'd be happy to. Although I will point out, I was upgraded last night, I'm the Town Manager now.
You're now Town Manager?
Mr. Plumb, Mr. Plumb came through for me, so.
Hello, thank you.
There's some red tape to work out first also.
Yeah, like at an election.
Might have just lost that one.
Right in.
Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, May 1st, 2014. First order of business, we have a poll hearing for Boardman Street. It was application from Verizon, followed by a Town Administrator report, including FY15 budget review, annual town meeting warrant review, action items considered laying out as a public way, Essex Street and Toils End Road, consider declaring surplus property from the Norfolk Public Library, and consider acceptance of grant funds for the Norfolk Recreation.
Thank you very much. We have a representative from Verizon here this evening, would you like to come up and join us? Thank you very much.
I think I got them all. Never sure.
Good evening, can you identify yourself for the audience?
Yes, for the record, my name is Thomas Blicharz, B-L-I-C-H-A-R-Z. I work for UC Synergetic, and we are consultants for Verizon. And I'm here on behalf of Verizon to petition for a stub poll on Boardman Street, Poll 22S.
Okay. Could you explain what a stub poll is?
A stub poll is a support poll, it's a guy poll. The main line poll number 22 is on a bend in the road, it's on a curve in the road in Boardman, and when that occurs, there are stresses on the poll that want to pull the poll over. So we have to counter that with some sort of support across the street. And today, we're supporting Poll 22 with what we refer to as tree guys. N-Star and Verizon each has a steel cable from Poll 22 across the street into a tree. And I looked at the trees tonight, one of them seemed like it's rotting away, so those wires are going to pull out sooner or later. So what we're going to do is place the stub poll, place an anchor on the stub poll, so there's your support, and then we'll take the tree guys out of the trees and, you know, stop that problem, eliminate that problem.
Will the stub poll be on the other side of the street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're not doing a double poll?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, any questions?
No.
What's your construction time, how long is it going to take?
Some of the work has already been done. The work order...
That's right. Generally, that's not the thing we like to hear.
I know. Well, there are two phases to the project, and Phase 1 has already been completed. The main line poll 22 was also going to be upgraded, so we don't need to petition for that, because we're going to stick the new poll in the same hole. So I went out there, and sure enough, the new poll has already been placed. So one half of the job is already done. So the point of that is, we don't have to write a job, we don't have to put it through the meat grinder to reach the foreman's desk, the foreman already has the job. So as soon as we get this okay, I would say very soon, but I don't work directly for the construction department, so I can't say when. If you would like to know when, I could call you with a...
I'd like you to call the Town Manager and let him know.
Okay, we'll do that.
Promote it again.
Yeah, there you go. Will we be having a police detail on this?
They generally work that out when they, if they, I suspect they will.
I suggest you do. It's on a curve there, and just trying to pull up and look around, there were cars flying back and forth.
That's my street.
I would recommend a police detail.
A little busy. Okay. Jack, do we have any outstanding issues with Verizon that we would want to address at this point?
We just have one on Pine Street. It's right at the, almost at the intersection of 1A and 115. It's a poll that is in the middle of a driveway at...
Oh, yeah, Transit Seating.
Transit Seating.
We've given permission on that, for them to do the work.
Yeah.
What's the name of the company, or a business?
Transit Seating.
Transit Seating.
And 115.
So the only lights in town, 1A and 115.
Okay.
You probably drove by it on your way in.
I come from Hopkinton, so I didn't go by there.
Oh, the other way, okay. There's a poll in a driveway.
Okay.
It would be really nice to get that work done, and it's been approved already.
All right. I will look into that, and I will call you, sir.
That'd be great.
Can I have your name and your number?
Jack Hathaway.
Jack Hathaway, yeah.
508...
508.
440...
Yes, sir.
2855.
That's never the number you tell me to call, that's why I only get the machine all the time.
Yep.
I see, that's the real number to call, I'll know that from now on. All right.
All right, so two things I will follow up.
I know. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Blicharz. Do I have a motion from the Board?
So moved, seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to allow for the installation of a stub poll at Boardman Street. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed no, the ayes have it. There you go.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You too.
All right, have a good evening, go Bruins.
You as well, yes, go Bees.
Thank you. Since the Advisory Board is here, and the person...
The whole Board.
The whole Board.
Way to go.
And the person Chairman Sneed, do you want to join us, Pat?
Well, I will. We need...
Were you planning for a separate time?
Well, I'm only here because we were thinking we would have a joint meeting in case anything came up that we needed to react to tonight, but we're not going to have a quorum, so we're not going to have a meeting.
Yeah.
So anything that happens tonight, we'll have to react to the night before town meeting and our usual meeting.
You've heard the news about Gumps, Jane and Pauls?
Yes.
Okay. And did you want to say anything about the public safety building project, the rec project?
I was going to give you an update about it, Pat wants to be here for that, that'd be great.
Aside from that, I'm not sure that there's any real issues concerning the Advisory Committee, we're just...
I have...
I'll get the update and then I think we're done.
Sounds good to me.
I have the three transfers that I talked about with the Advisory Board. Three transfers from the Advisory Board Reserve Fund. So I haven't had a chance to present them to the Selectmen yet, so I'll do that, and then we'll turn them over to the Advisory Board for their, whenever you have your next meeting, I guess at the town meeting.
Did we know amounts, or did you just tell us they were coming?
I did, I think I did, yeah. $12,000 for the ventilation system for the DPW garage system, so we moved that out of the capital request and did the $12,000 for that. $3,900 for the Police Department expenses for the tasers.
The 12 grand rings a bell, I do remember you did tell us, yes.
And then salary adjustments that we talked about for my contract negotiation. Moving it from, to the correct calendar fiscal year, so.
And on Article 37, Jack, it's fair to say that we're going to continue pursuing, we'll keep that article alive?
Yeah, that is definitely going to keep going. So I got a quick update on...
This is the...
Yeah.
You want these passed down, one each?
No, those are three separate requests, so those need to end up going to the Advisory Board. I don't know if you guys want to approve them, I'd like one of you to sign that top one. That's from actually my contract change, it's moving it from fiscal year 14.
Oh, we voted that.
14, yeah.
Yeah. I can sign that with your pleasure as Clerk, or?
You're the Vice Chair, aren't you? No, you're not.
I'm a Clerk.
Oh. Sorry, you got a promotion too?
Next week.
Yeah.
The pay doubles.
So those can either go to Mr. Sneed or to one of his able audit assistants.
And we need those.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, so this is a breakdown on the likely costs...
Give one to Pat.
He's got one?
I gave him mine.
Oh, okay, now you have yours.
Going to move things along.
There you go.
I could sign these tonight, but we haven't approved them yet, so I guess I will not.
So we're going to be asking for $1.8 million, Jack?
Sorry.
Random interference.
Yes, at the... So I have one more kind of pre-town meeting business to do on this, at least one more step that I know about. We're going to meet with the Public Safety Committee, Permanent Building Committee on Monday, and so they're going to have a chance to weigh in on this and offer some advice. So just to give you a little bit of background, so we're talking about a 16, yeah, 16,000 square foot building located in Norfolk down Shire Park. It's right now kind of an open metal building, stone foundation and walls on the side, going up probably six or eight feet. The tentative plan is to use 8,000 of that, square feet of that building, or one quarter of the footprint for the Norfolk Police Department, office and common space, another quarter of that building but without a second story for garage space and Sallyport, and then another quarter of that building, but two stories, so 8,000 square feet for office and common space for the Metacoma Regional Communication Center, which they would then be paying to the town of Norfolk, rent that will be negotiated in upcoming months, if not sooner. And then we'd have one quarter of the building that would be, Metacoma would be at one end, the Police Department would be at the other end, garage would be at the far end, Police Department next to their garage, and then an open space in between the Police Department and Metacoma, which we would have available for future growth, either in the Metacoma Regional Communication Center, dispatch if you will, or the Police Department. Or for other purposes that Norfolk thinks makes sense. So the current request that I have estimated at this point and gone over with Maguire Group, which is an architectural and engineering firm that has worked with us both on the public safety building, as well as they represent the Metacoma Regional Communication Center, and I don't want to give you the line items on this, but to talk about, that would be for the purchase of the property, engineering and design, both for this, the public, for the police portion of this building, as well as retrofitting our public safety building for fire department purposes, which would mainly be the garage space. Project management costs, and as you know, under the state requirements for these types of projects, we need to hire a project manager before we do anything else, like hire an architect or a contractor. And then also do some of the early site work, and what I'm thinking about there is the timing of this would be that we would ideally purchase this building this spring, we would be able to do, finish up the site work, the... There is septic in, and they have a common septic system in that development, stormwater is in, again, they have common stormwater, but we still need to make some connections there. There's still some, bringing in loom and grass, finish up the driveways. I just wanted to have some money in this part of the project so that if, because Metacoma will probably actually get ahead of us, so that they could build out their portion and have occupancy before a year goes by with the police station. What I think will happen with the police station is that if, is that we would, if this is approved at town meeting, we would then go out and hire a project manager, go out for bid, and go out for bid for project manager, then go out for bid for architectural and engineering services, design the building, as well as the upgrades to the public safety building, get all the way up to design, to build documents, go out to bid this upcoming winter, early spring, and then have bids in hand for next Springstown meeting. We go to the Springtown meeting, and then I would suspect, unless I hear otherwise from you, we would go to town meeting, ask for the purchase price of the construction funds, and then after that, we would go to a proposition two and a half override for a debt exclusion, or a capital exclusion, but I believe it would be a debt exclusion. I think the future requests, based on having conversations with the architectural folks, is that the build out of the police station is 12,000 square feet, on average $300 per square foot, comes to 3.6 million. Enhancements at the existing public safety building, this is the situation is if we tear down the garage and then rebuild, we would have 8,000 square feet at about $200 a square foot, be another $1.6 million. That's certainly something we want to talk about with the Public Safety Building Committee on Monday. There's all different kinds of options, we've talked about in the past, extending the garage in the back, widening the garage, adding one or two bays on the other side of the building, and then keeping the existing garage, so I look at this as a worst-case scenario, so $1.6 million. So the future request is 5.2, the current request is 1.8 million, total estimate of $7 million. I think that gets us to where we want to be with our public safety buildings. And if we looked back at our 2009 and 2010 requests, which were about $10 million, escalation would bring them to a minimum of 12 million, probably more like 13 or 14 million. This is a much cheaper solution than that solution. On the negative side, you know, this is in the south end of town, so, but as far as the Police Department goes, that's not as big a concern for them, because they respond from on the road. We wouldn't, certainly wouldn't want to move the Fire Department down there.
You could even put a police presence in the Fire Department.
And I would. Chuck and I have both said that would be something we would want to do, have an office at the police station, whether it's manned all the time or not, probably not manned all the time, but if somebody called and said, "I want to meet with a police officer," we'd probably send a police officer to the center of town and have them meet the resident at that location.
So 1.8 for this town meeting?
For this town meeting.
As a normal borrow?
As a normal borrow, that would, then, we would, there'd be no repayment in fiscal Y15, it would be in fiscal 16, which I would be hopeful that we would get that into the debt exclusion next year.
So the intent would be to roll the 1.8 into the debt exclusion?
That would be my intent, yeah. Mr. Sneed brought up a question at the Advisory Board meeting, you know, what if we end up purchasing this and then not getting the money in the future, or I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it was something to that effect, so that we end up...
If the rec were to bail out for some reason or other, but...
Yeah, we did get a vote, I did get a vote from the Board of Directors, of which one I'm one, I am one of, that this is the site that they want to be located in. It was unanimous out of the four directors, so this is where they want to be, so they'll... And we've had, you know, preliminary discussions about rents, I think, you know, whether or not we calculate rents based on a percentage of the building, and they pay a quarter of the debt service, or we come up with comps for commercial space and make any adjustments if necessary for commercial use, for municipal use. I think we're all kind of thinking the same thing, that we can come up with a reasonable number that the Metacoma would pay back to Norfolk for that rental.
Well, Rick Stillman had said that there would be significant penalties for pulling out...
There is.
Afterwards, anyway, so that sort of eliminated the concern about the thing possibly falling apart.
Is 15 bucks a square foot rent unreasonable for that? Because that's 120, well, it's three quarters of 120 grand, which is $80,000, right? No, no, it's more than that.
90.
90,000. And that's almost the debt service on a 10-year at 1.8 million, and you could push this to 20, so you're down, then you're very close, like 90-plus interest is the 20-year of 1.8, so your rent is almost there.
Yeah, I think the only thing we're going to have to take into account is that we're giving them a shell of a building and not a full build-out, so whether or not they, you know, they get some elite...
I wasn't thinking that.
Some discount for their construction costs.
Yeah, okay.
The other problem with debt like this is that you front-end, your level amortization of the principal, not, so I did a rough guess, if it was 20 years, it's $90,000 for the principal, but if it's 4%, let's say, that's another 72,000, so it's 160,000 first few years, thereabouts, which to fit within the debt, I assume, would be a bit of a stretch.
Yeah, well, I would hope to not...
The roll-in, yeah. I mean, that would be offset by revenues, which the guess was 30,000 to 40,000 or something in that...
At a minimum.
Perhaps, maybe as much as 50, leaving 100,000 for the budget that came to that.
If you roll the whole thing up into a debt exclusion, and you assume 4% on 20 years, you're talking roughly 375 a year, or initial years, and we're losing 75 to 80,000 between 15 and 16, fiscal year 15 and 16, on our excluded debt, it's coming down, 75 grand. Add 40 grand up, you're talking a payment of around 230, 240, based on what we were looking at before. You know, to say bargain sounds strange, but it's a great...
My question was geared at fitting it within the budget.
That'd be tough.
But if the intent is not to do that, and to include it in the rollover, I mean, in the exclusion...
7 million would be tough to fit in the budget.
Well, I'm talking about the...
1.8.
1.8, 1.8 we could fit in the budget.
The original discussion was putting the 1.8 in the budget, but if the intent is that's only going to exist for one year, and then it goes in with the exclusion, it's a non-issue. Doesn't matter what it is, under 2 and 1/2, because we'll simply make the override big enough to compensate for it.
But you've got a good chunk of money coming off over the next four or five years, off of that excluded debt. Good chunk of money. So it, if we can pull this off, it's financially, you know, substantially different deal than we envisioned when we looked at this. Well, I know the original was 10-4, and that was four years ago, so we're probably looking at close to 13, as Jack said, 13 to 14 million now. And it's either that, Pat, or we're going to have to throw a whole bunch of money in to repair something that is all temporary, anyway.
Oh, I'm not at all, I'm completely in favor of this.
No, I know you're for it, I know you're for it.
My only question was relating to the, what might happen within the budget, but the plan is, the plan is that we're not going to have it within the budget, and that's fine, that's great.
1.8, you'd do that over five years, wouldn't you?
We can't, I mean, it's up to, you know...
The point is to not do it at all.
But if you did, if you had to, you would do that over five years.
If we kept it within the operating budget?
Correct.
No, that'd be like a $400,000 hit. Your debt costs would go up 400 grand.
Well, I understand, I understand, but I mean, how long can you push that out?
Well, you can do 20.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not saying I would, I just, you can do up to 20, and you can get legislation to do 30.
Well, I know that's the law, but the practicality. Anyway, I would hope, I'm with you.
I always try and do it as short as I can.
Yeah, well, that's my point, but I'm hoping that, to me, the right answer is to push it into the debt.
It would be 600 grand if you had to do it.
Mm-hmm, a little under, just under, yeah.
Basically, you couldn't do any of this without an override, really, could you?
You couldn't do the building without an override, for sure, yeah.
Just the rec piece.
Yep. Agreed.
Metacoma has the ability to issue debt on their own, so it's, you know, it's not, if the wheels came off of this, it's not unheard of that they would, you know, they could make the decision to purchase this from us in the future if we had to. I would absolutely not want to do that, because we need a public safety building improvement. And this doesn't get us, you know, this doesn't get us a new fire station, but it gets us, I think it gets us the garage space they need, and it gives them more space within the building where we can turn offices into...
You could make it work.
We can turn offices into the rooms they have, and yeah, make, give them a much better arrangement than they have today, so I like this, I like this plan.
I do, too.
It's a 75 or 80% solution for half the money, basically, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, well said.
Yeah. Any other questions, Pat?
I don't have any more, no.
Jack, do we need to vote the 1.8 million as the number, or is that already in the article we gave to the Advisory Board?
The article didn't have a number, so it's...
Okay, so they can just set their number?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So are you meeting at 6 on town meeting night?
At the latest. It looks like 6 o'clock will be good enough, but if we have, if we think we have a little more to cover, I might call it earlier than that, but as things stand now, 6 o'clock.
You don't have any 11th-hour brain teasers here, do you? I don't think.
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of, either, so...
So this was the big outstanding issue, was having a number to go with this. We have it now, and in any event, we've already approved the article, so I don't, I don't see any, and it was unanimous on the Board, so I really don't see any concern or problem with this at all, from our standpoint.
Good, all right. Thanks for your support.
Thank you very much.
Ready? Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Jack, did you want to talk budget, other budget items? Did you have a budget update force?
I do, I actually have a...
Yeah, may I have a moment, Mr. Garrity?
The floor is yours.
Well, the Chair, this Chair. Actually, thank you, Mr. Hathaway. This is your last meeting, huh? I know you knew that, but we do have a plaque for you, but...
Very nice.
Before we present the gavel, which I know is your favorite tool...
I was planning on slipping this one under the coat.
Well, I think you can feel free. I just, a couple of things. You and I have been together for six years, and we've had our moments of disagreement, but you've been a great asset to the Board. You want, the accomplishments that you've, you know, the solar array complex is something that will remain with us as a very favorable financial decision for a long time to come, and you were instrumental in making that happen.
Thank you.
It is an expertise that you have far in excess of, I know, I'll speak for me, far in excess of me, I won't speak for my counterpart, but you were very instrumental in making that happen, and that's been a quarter of a million dollar asset to the town, and that's one heck of a legacy to leave with. But I've enjoyed very much working with you. I know you're going to be a total pain in the neck when you hit the audience...
Probably.
Which will make it even more fun, but you'll be a knowledgeable pain in the neck, which makes it even better. But we thoroughly enjoyed working with you, you've been a great, great Selectman, a great asset to the town, and we'll miss you.
Thank you very much.
I will personally miss you, very much so.
Thank you.
Mr. Bugby, your floor is yours as well, sir.
No, I appreciate the first three years, it was wonderful, you were a good mentor.
For those at home, these are not given to every member of the Board of Selectmen, they're only given to folks that serve at least two terms. Mr. Garrity has had the stamina to last that long, and it's been much appreciated, and I know many share that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
A pleasure.
A pleasure, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
And this is a, this is a board...
And remember, town meeting is Wednesday.
Wednesday. At 10:30 PM.
11.
So it's, this is a board effort, it took everyone to do this stuff. I thoroughly enjoyed my time here, I enjoyed working with all the Board members, Ramesh and Jim Tomaszewski, you, Scott, of course. It's been a lot of fun, wouldn't it trade it for the world? I realized the other day, Tuesday night at 8:02, it's the first time in 18 years I'm not going to be on any town boards.
That might not last long.
Well, my wife pointed out that I'm still on the Energy Committee.
There you go.
So she might let me do that one. But I have a couple of gifts for you guys, too.
Uh-oh.
So just a couple of things to remind you of me...
They're not Newton logos, are they?
No. These are MassSave soda koozies. MassSave is the state efficiency program, this will remind you all to get your energy audits.
I did, I used it.
I already had one.
So make sure, yeah, and there's more where that came from, I got some for you, too, Sue.
Oh, thank you.
Now, Jim, specially for you...
Oh, Lord.
After six years of having my pen stolen... After six years of having my pens stolen.
You got some pens.
And Scott, for you, since he's going to sit next to you.
More, more pens?
I got you some pens.
Thank you, Rob.
So, and I also got.
Nice, thank you.
I got something for Chris down in Cable. Scott, we're going to put this over the window.
Ah, ah, ah. You have that, Chris?
This will be a reminder, slow down.
Nice, Rob.
So everyone can get Scott's wisdom, so. This has been a ball, I've had a lot of fun, and I'll remember it for a long time, and maybe, you left some space, so there can be another set of numbers down there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So who knows, maybe when I retire, I can become a senior statesman, but, so thank you very much, guys, and Marion and Sue, I couldn't have, wouldn't have done it any differently, so, thanks.
We've enjoyed very much working with you.
Okay.
Don't want to get damaged.
And the four pens should last me at least six meetings, thank you.
I doubt it's one meeting. These two are going to last a lifetime.
I might have to give a couple.
Marion, would you like to keep these as a surplus?
Sure.
So.
Well, Rob, thank, I just want to say, throw in my two bits, I want to thank you for your service to the town, and it's been very enjoyable, and it's been on Jim's comments, it's been fun, sometimes we've, we've had disagreements, but at the end of the disagreement, we've always been able to move on to the next item and continue to be productive, so, and you have provided a great service to the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. So, and, everyone out there, Tuesday, you have to get out there and vote, there are plenty of races, plenty of people vying to serve the town, it's great to see so many candidates, please, remember to vote, vote early, vote often, no, don't do that, but get out there and, and choose the next round of people to serve, so, and I hope that you guys have fun with, with my successor, it's a little sad that there wasn't a race, that would have been neat, but Jeff has done a great job on the planning board, and I'm sure he'll be a wonderful chairman, he seems a little more calm, so it's going to be a different vibe, I think, he's a little more settled, you know, but.
Everyone will think we're on Ritalin.
The meds finally kick in. All right, so, puck dropped like two minutes ago, Jack, I think, I don't want to get beat up my last night.
Yeah, you know, my Bruins highlights keep popping up on the screen, so don't look at the screen if you don't want to see.
Hasn't dropped yet, guys.
Yeah, it started at 7.
7:30.
7:30.
Okay.
Okay. Anywho.
Jack?
Do we have a balanced budget?
You want proof?
Oh, you know, oh, you're right, I'm getting Red Sox scores, that was Tampa Bay.
Ah, thanks.
Good night, guys.
Thanks, thanks.
Good news, all right, let's get going. So the budget, I've given the advisory board the budget, I've given you the budget, I've, for folks at town, folks at home, if, I've got the Norfolk homepage on the screen up there, it's virtualnorfolk.org, if you click on the annual town meeting, I don't know what you call that, label, words on the left-hand side in the, kind of the grayish box, go to annual town meeting, nothing will happen, there we go, it's coming now.
See why there are so many tech questions at Candidates Night the other night?
Yeah.
Technology questions.
That was good. I don't know, mate, oh, hold on a second, this is working in the test run. This homepage, by the way, you can.
It's just a healthcare enrollment form, isn't it?
All right.
Half a care.
Well, it's going to bring you into a page in a second, annual town meeting, and it's going to have the warrant on that page, along with the recommendations, it's in one document, so you'll have the advisory board recommendations, those are also going out in the mail, will be delivered next week sometime, if you want a early look at them, there, you can pull them off the web, and there's also, there'll also be a link that I don't seem to be able to get to.
Click in the middle, Jack, where it says warrant and recommendations.
I know, but it's a.
Just click the middle, turn on the news and announcements.
No, see, see the loading bar, it's trying to load, it's not loading.
Yeah, maybe just click on the middle. I'll just reboot, reboot, the old Microsoft reboot. I suspect my internet connection died, and I don't know it, but there'll be another link there for budgets, and you can look at the FY15 budget, which is this package that we're going through now, and I've, we've got the revenue budget on there, we've got budget drivers, employee bud, employee benefits breakdown, excluded debt, we've got debt in total, which includes the non-exempt debt, so that's the debt that we pay for out of the operating budget, we have the general fund exempt debt, and we've got the water department debt, all on one page. In addition to that, we, the next page shows you the King Philip assessment history, just for, put it in perspective, after that, we've got the summary budget, which is all of the line items of the municipal side of the budget, oh, look, my page came up, so that's, that's really just all it is.
Exciting.
And following that, we've got the water enterprise department budget, and then the last page, which the hard copies don't, you don't have in front of you today, but is on the internet, is the capital, breakdown of the capital budget. So we have a $34.6 million budget, it's up 3.3%, the two, you know, the two, two kind of issues that I have remaining in the, well, there's a couple, there's three really, remaining issues in the budget. One is that we don't completely cover the snow and ice deficit, we have a, we today have a deficit of $447,000, Julie has identified, along with the department heads, 447, sorry, here, Jim, can you just hand those down? She's identified over $380,000 of either free cash or budgets that she can transfer to the snow and ice deficit, so we are now, we, and we are going to end the year with a $74,000 deficit, which we will need to cover in the fall, either through appropriation from free cash, or transfers from available budgets, or identification of new revenue sources that I would not be able to tell you about today, but would be available in the fall. I, I'm, my, my plan would be to use the free cash that is certified in the fall.
And, and based on what we know, that should not be a problem.
Should not be a problem. I did give you a draft of the transfers, which I've gone over with the advisory board already, we're transferring $247,000 from a variety of budgets, along with free cash, for a total of $357,000, to cover one small deficit in our abatement account, for $811. We have a shortage in the ambulance billing, which is good news, we have additional ambulance revenue, so that ambulance billing is, we pay an ambulance, a service, based on the amount of revenue that we generate, so, good news is, we have extra additional revenue, we, but the $15,000 budget is, is going to run a little bit short, so Julie's putting $1,000 in there, and then we're transferring $355,000 to the snow and ice deficit. On top of that, we're moving, we have the snow and ice revolving account, which is an account that, for roads that aren't accepted, that we receive funds from developers or other people that own the roads, that we plow their road for them, they contribute into that, we have $16,000 into that revolving fund, which we're going to transfer to the snow and ice deficit, and then the final one on the bottom is the fiber optic project, we need to replace the, the old coax iLoop in town, it's from Comcast, when we did the last negotiation with Comcast, they, they, we eliminated that, it's probably a 15 to 20-year-old coax cable at this time, that we used to transfer data around between the municipal buildings, as part of our negotiation, they got us to get off of that coax cable, so we're replacing that, so we have gotten off of it, but now we're, we have internet service at each building, we'd like to upgrade that with a fiber optic system, so it's, we're going to lay what they call gray wire between the buildings, the total cost is $90,000, right now, we're trying to get NCTV, they've tentatively agreed to pay somewhere between 25 to $30,000 of that cost, so that'll, the municipal cost will be about $60,000, that'll eliminate $5,000 to $7,000 of annual costs for us paying for cable, as well as additional hardware costs, like firewalls at each of the buildings, pretty significant hardware costs at each building, and also provide us better service, we have some distortion of data between the buildings, and that'll go away. Our phone system is a voice-over-internet protocol phone system that runs over that system as well, so that'll go through the fiber, we'll get better performance on the phone system as well.
And it's not a five-year breakpoint, that's not bad.
Yeah, and that comes out of, we have $90,000 in the old underground utilities account, which we had, probably been sitting there for about 10,000, 10 years, earning interest, it was money that Verizon was pulling from to pay for some of the underground utility project, that was outside of the money that was from the, the surcharge that they had on our utility bills.
So this is not ratepayer money?
What's that?
This was town money, this was not ratepayer money?
No, this is, this is town money, this is.
I was thinking town money, it's all taxpayer money.
Yeah, it's taxpayer money, it's, it's, it's bond proceeds, so we borrowed money for part of our project, and we came in under budget, you know, we kind of thought, we thought there were going to be, Butch thought there were going to be some additional costs at some point, so we kept that money aside, still earning interest, but we're comfortable at this point that there are no future costs, so.
Good.
There still is about $39,000 in that account, so we could actually apply that to another project in the future, we can't use it to pay off debt, we can only transfer, town meeting can only transfer it to a similar type project.
Mm-hmm.
So, back to my commentary about the, the annual budget, I have the, one of the things that came up through, kind of late in the budget process, I have a balanced budget, King Philip is, is funded at a 4% increase on our assessment, a little communication breakdown, I guess I would call it, between myself and the King Philip Business Office, they're, they're thinking we're going to have an assessment increase of 4%, but based on revised numbers from last year, which we were never privy to, those are, those are changes that happen as part of the minimum local contribution requirements from the state, so there's about a $50,000 gap in between what we think we agreed to, and what they think we agreed to. I would suggest we leave it at this, at this point, until we have some more discussions with Rentham and Plainville, Rentham and Plainville still haven't, haven't balanced their budgets to the point where they can meet our 4% number, they actually, Plainville can get to this number that we have, Rentham can't, Rentham, Plainville cannot get to the 4% number that.
KP thinks we should be at.
KP thinks we should be at. You know, we, we could create a larger deficit in the snow and ice, you know, move some of the money from free cash, rather than move it to transfers to the snow and ice deficit, over to this, if.
Because snow and ice, you can legally carry a deficit.
Yeah, but I, I mean, we have a $72,000 deficit, I don't want to go into the fall with 100, 120,000 deficit. On top of that, the other kind of challenge I have is the elementary school, their initial request was 4.2%, through their budget process, they, they would really like to get up to a 4.8% pro, 4.8% level, I've told Dr. Lardy, the superintendent, that I can't get there at this point, you know, short of coming up with money from one of our, you know, again, from creating a larger deficit in the snow and ice, or, or reaching into destabilization, so, she said they could make cuts, they're not eager to do that, but they could get to the 4.2% if that's what we need them to get to.
But the 4.25 and the 4.8, the difference were add-ons, they weren't.
Right, they're trying to restore things.
They were not, they were restoring items, they weren't level service items, so the 4.2 does not require them to go below level service.
So it wouldn't, it would not be cuts to actual people there, or programs already being done, it's, they would be able to add back some stuff?
Well, I know, unless she's changed it, I know when I went through the budget, whether it was, they were add-ons, good to have, I'm not suggesting they weren't good things to do.
Restorations, I guess I would call it.
But they were restoration items, that, things that had been cut in prior years, but they were not takeaways from what they had last year.
And one of the things that she mentioned to me is, is the health program, that's one of, one of the things, they may have to not.
I mean, I would love to see them restore those programs, I, I support what she's trying to do 100%.
So, you know, unless you guys want me to make some changes, this is the 34.6 million budget that we have, it is up on the website, and the advisory board has it, and we'll have discussions about it at town meeting if.
Nope, I have no questions.
Unless you get some suggestions.
Jack, we talked with King Philip then, you know, about the different, you know, I know we talked all the time, we were on the phone with him, but we didn't say anything, he just confirmed that, you know, the minimum local is not changed, but.
I told him that this is the number I have in my budget, I haven't heard back from him or Dr. Zalinski yet.
Did you, um, did you pump up excise since the last time we've seen this budget?
I did probably three weeks ago, yeah, when I went to the advisory board, excise tax is at, yeah, 1,450, and new growth is at 700,000.
Yeah, I saw the new growth number, too.
So those are two, you know, so I've got some, those, again, reasons that I don't want to, you know, extend myself any farther than we've already extended ourselves, because I, while I'm confident that, you know, excise tax is going to, we're on track to beat last year's number, the FY14 number should be FY, beat FY13, it's still a climb, I need, I need, I need residents to go out and buy cars.
Do you patriotic do in Norfolk and buy a car?
Yeah, new car, too, not a used car.
Not a used car, yeah.
And then.
You're due.
New growth is, new, new growth is at 700,000, which again, we had 650,895 in 2014, every indication.
That's a pretty solid.
Through a number of different developments, through the medical building, the car wash, et cetera, I, I think we'll make the 700,000, but it's still, it's the biggest number we've ever had there in the budget, so it's a big number.
And I'm impressed that you kept the snow and ice 25 grand in, that showed some fortitude.
It was, it's my gift to you.
It's, it's sitting there with a big blinking light around it when, when it comes time to fill the last.
It'll be, it'll be back down after next Tuesday.
You know, it was hard.
8:02.
When we do the reorg, it's just a whole thing, it's budget and reorg, oh, sorry, snow and ice, is that, no.
After spending $575,000 on snow and ice this year.
It was a brutal winter.
I didn't have it in my heart to do anything but bring that number up.
Yeah, it was a tough winter.
It was an awful winter, and it hasn't been a great spring, either.
Today, it's afternoon, 2 o'clock, sun came out, it was a good day.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of work there, Jack, that's great.
Do you want me to just touch base on the capital items real quick, or have you been, heard, heard that enough that you don't want to hear them again?
I'm okay.
Um, well, I can't change, we, we're not going to change anything, so, I want more police cars, of course.
Of course.
It doesn't joke.
Yeah. I will just say, Article 10 for people is, 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 is road repairs, and that's something that we have not had in the budget, in the town, easy for me to say, in the warrant for a long time, so it's, it's money to do specific projects, some of which is Park Street, which is already underway, so it would be a shame if we didn't vote for this at town meeting, we will, we will obviously raid the Chapter 90 funds if we, if, if this doesn't pass, but when we expect to receive somewhere between 290 and, and 360 in Chapter 90 funds, this will go a long way to, if we can approve Article 10 as submitted, that'll allow us to do Park Street, Main Street, and Lake Street, parts of those roads.
I know that, I've been a little out of touch the last couple of weeks, but has the governor released any of those additional funds?
There was a release, wasn't there?
I didn't, I, oh, yeah, there was.
Yeah, the last week, something.
How much was it?
I think he released 2/3 of it again.
Okay.
So, um, on Article 8, we're just asking for funds to be released from the Water Enterprise Fund to purchase two tank mixers. That's just really, uh, putting in a, uh, piping system, so it's a non-mechanical system that will mix the water in the tanks, uh, the two tanks, the whole purpose is to keep the water fresher than it is today. Article, uh, 9 is, uh, debt to borrow, to borrow money for a Baco dump truck for the DPW. It's one of the big 33,000-pound trucks that, uh, is, are the heavyweight trucks that do our moving of materials in the summer, and, and salt and ice and snow removal in the winter. And then two police vehicles. Um, in addition to that, $75,000 for the HL Day sprinkler system. We would borrow $75,000 for that, and then we have $35,000 in a existing appropriation that we would transfer to fund the whole $110,000 project. So, that's, that's my budget. It's been a lot of fun.
Your annual recreation.
What's up? My annual recreation, yeah.
Absolutely.
Mary was kind of, Mary and I are kind enough, she, we pointed out that I have 13 days off left, so right after town meeting, I'm taking the rest of the year off.
Well, you know, just fiscal year. The way we open town hall, 13 days is about, you know, June and half of May, so-
Uh, pretty close, yeah.
Works out great. Appreciate your support.
I'll dig.
Thanks, Rob. Uh, so we do have, uh, anything else on the warrant or the budget that you want to talk about?
No.
Okay.
Well, speaking for me.
I have a couple of action items. Uh, we have plans that are here, as well as, uh, in the town clerk's office for the layout of Essex Street. As you all know, less, Essex Street has been actually in existence for, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 years. So, I don't know if, you probably don't want to look at the as-bills, I'm thinking, but, uh, we will have my-lars for you to sign Tuesday. Um, we have, uh, I would ask that you please accept the layout of Essex Street per the memorandum, excuse me, per the memorandum to the planning board from Professional Services Corporation.
Okay. And Town Council's looked at this?
Town Council has reviewed it with, uh, with the planning board.
All right. Gents?
Uh, no, I have no questions. No, I've seen it, gone over it, I'm so moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept as a public way Essex Street from Station 10 plus 83.67 to Station 23.5831. As shown on, on the acceptance plan dated February 2014, drawn by Landmark Engineers of New England, Inc. of Norfolk. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, the ayes have it.
And then Parcels A and Parcels B are along Toils End Road, off of Grove Street, uh, so I guess the northern end of Toils End Road. And those are two parcels that need to be added to the right-of-way that will give it the necessary width in the parcels. Uh, so we're asking you to accept as a public way Parcels A and Parcels B, as shown on a plan recorded with the Norfolk Registry of Deeds and Plan Book 607, pages 77 and 78, and on a plan entitled Plan of Land on Toils End Road by United Consultants, Inc., dated March 30, 2011, on file with the town clerk. And heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen, while Parcels A and Parcels B are an extension of the way known as Toils End Road, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase gift and/or eminent domain and fee to or easements in said Parcels A and B, and any drainage, access, utility, and other reasons related thereto.
So often in life, we're denied closure, but what I find really particularly interesting is this Toils End Road lane is the culmination of a decision I wrote for the zoning board, something like 12 years ago, denying Jack Scott the two houses that he got, because they were technically on park, and nine-
The frontage was on park.
The park, frontage was in park, and you had to come off your frontage, and 911 couldn't catch you, and we had to, it's just, it's nice to see that some things never go away.
This is it, this is, this is your closure.
This'll be, I, this is why I ran for selectman six years ago, to clean up this, uh, this mess. Now, do we, do we have a motion? Motion has been made-
Second.
And seconded. All those, is there, is there any further discussion on the motion?
Job all done, Rob.
A little trip down memory lane there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, the ayes have it.
You vote to declare three chairs and one bulletin board from the Norfolk Public Library as surplus property.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, I didn't know if we're on discuss.
None of these are the book chairs, I assume.
Oh, I think you can count on it. I gotta pull up the truck.
Motion has been made and seconded to declare three chairs and a bulletin board surplus from the Norfolk Public Library. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, the ayes have it.
Uh, and finally, under action items, please vote to accept a $1,500 grant from the Norfolk Community League for the summer playground program.
So moved.
Second. I thought we, we have a general article that allows-
This is a little bit of PR.
I've never seen, had to approve this before. It's the first.
We've never approved grants. That's why we have Article whatchamacallit, allowing the selectmen to approve, to accept such grants as-
This is a first.
We're being, we're being more thorough in our-
So moved.
All right, motion's been made.
Wait, I already seconded it, Rob. I know, that's just me.
Motion's been made, seconded.
Getting nervous.
All those in favor of, uh, accepting this grant for 1,500 bucks from the Community League for a summer playground program? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. But again, it's for rec, right?
That's right.
Yep.
I thought we already talked about this, like, we have no, yeah, again, forget it. Not on your last day, Rob.
Actually, I think it's an upgrade for the Explorer.
I thought it was a decal, Jim. I figured, Rob, we should have come to decal for his going-away present.
Okay, that'll work.
Rob's face in the middle of it.
I noticed the truck wasn't out there at the moment. Perhaps it's hauling all sorts of goods all over the place. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor said aye. We all, those opposed said nay, nobody that was, so it's, uh, made, whatever. I hope the, it's a lovely summer playground program. Which playground will those be at?
Summer playground.
Which one is that?
They operate that at the combination of the Freeman Kennedy School and the Pond Street Recreation Center.
Ah, there are other playgrounds that are about to open, are they not?
There are.
Yeah, there is a meeting tomorrow, uh, Recreation, and, uh, members of CPC will be meeting with the contractors at the-
A walk for us, okay.
Recreation Center at Rockwood Road, Gumps, uh, to talk about the punch items, punch list items, and get that open, and then soon as they get that done, we'll set a grand opening date and have a little ceremony, ribbon cutting. I did receive, uh-
Any news on the community garden component of that?
Uh, no, we need to-
Jim is just being so nice to me tonight.
We need, we need to talk about that.
He's tickling all my little spots.
Were you going to talk about that?
I wasn't, I wasn't going to say a thing about it.
Uh, no, I haven't had any, uh-
Okay, I'll, I'll inquire. I, I'm anxious to see that to get going. You're not?
No, no, it's, the heart good, I'm-
Oh.
He wants it there.
Well, somebody's got to pick up the slack for you when you're not.
Rob can send us texts. I did receive notice yesterday, so it's not on your agenda, but just, uh, so I, I, we may want to take action at the next meeting. Uh, we did receive notice from Attorney Cannon of Doherty, Duggan and Cannon, and another name I can't pronounce. Notice that, uh, land located at lots 1 and 2 on Cleveland Street, Norfolk, Mass., as shown on lots 1 and 2. Uh, these are lots, uh, connected to Jane and Paul's Farm on Cleveland Street. They have 2.52 acres that they have come under agreement to sell, uh, and, but they are listed under Chapter 61A, so they, this is their official notice to the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, I didn't know they were 61A property.
Yes.
Yeah, the whole-
I knew the farm was, I thought those were excluded, because they never farmed that land.
No, they had that under too.
Uh, so I, I assume at your next meeting, or maybe we could do it at pre-town meeting, without Rob, um, just have a quick vote that we're not going to take action, because we've, I know we've discussed that before, so that they can go through the process that they want to go through, and not wait for the-
Okay.
-calendar to run out on.
So, just to update folks, because we, we said the magic word, um, Jane and Paul's Farm, as you know, there's a, a warrant article to, um, to appropriate funding from the Community Preservation Act, to in part purchase a agricultural preservation restriction on the farm, and, and Jane and Paul would sell the farm to a nonprofit, who would then find a farmer who wants to farm it and sell the farm to him, while the town, or her, while the town would hold the restriction in joint with the state and this nonprofit, so that it would remain a farm. Um, over the weekend, the, uh, Jane and Paul reconsidered, which is as their right to do, it's their property, and, um, we won't be pursuing this action at town meeting, it's not appropriate anymore, we don't have a willing seller. Um, because, on the good side, they've seemed to have indicated they want to continue farming it, so as long as we can buy corn, uh, there every summer, I don't care who owns it, frankly.
We'd prefer it to be Jane and Paul's.
There you go. They make good corn so far, so, just, um, for those who are watching and perhaps heard a little bit about it, and then heard that, so, no, Jane, the main Jane and Paul's Farm was not just sold for, uh, for house lots, but those two lots on Cleveland Street.
And that was property that was never farmed.
Right, and we had talked about that weeks ago, that that was happening. So, Jack, we have no more items on the agenda.
We do not, other than our sobbing goodbyes.
Yes, it's-
Do that off-camera though, I don't want, we'd be on-camera.
It would be unseemly. Um, I would very miss if I didn't say thank you to all the wonderful department heads and employees who have worked for Norfolk in the last six years while I've been with them, um, been here, um, and the ones who've left, like Coach Vito, who was a very entertaining DPW head. Bob McGee has been a very capable and able, uh, replacement, and in fact, I think we've got a little more paving going on now than we had before, so that's very exciting. It was one of the things that drove me to run, because we would keep fixing intersections and not actually paving the roads between the intersections. So, um, great folks, great, the police chief, Chief Stone is excellent, fire chief, uh, Chief Bushnell, um, the, from folks in recreation, to the library, to the school, you people have great public servants who work for you in Norfolk. They work very hard. I know it's a difficult job to work for a town, and I know I didn't make many of their jobs very easier, very much easier sometimes, um, with crazy requests, but, uh, they've always been very helpful.